All right, the zoning board review is now in session. Tonight is our first time trying this, so please everybody bear with us. I'm gonna ask the board members to please unmute your mics for roll call. Eric, you need to unmute. And Kathleen, you need to unmute as well. Eric, you're unmuted, thank you. Kathleen, I think you're still looking for the little microphone icon?
I think I'm gonna be, I can unmute her.
She's, we unmuted you.
Thanks. I'm not totally technologically savvy here, almost.
Okay, so, before we start, I'm gonna call roll call. With me here in town hall is John Borden, vice chairman.
Here.
Here.
Ben, I'm not sure if you can hear me.
Ben Furell?
Here.
Kathleen Pavlakis?
Here.
Eric Reposa?
Here.
Du Horowitz?
Yeah.
Bill Wadika? Bill, you need to unmute. Will unmute you. Unmute it, okay, Bill, you, Bill Wadika?
Present.
Okay, good, now, just some reminders, because this is the first time we've done this, so we'll tread cautiously, so, board members, presenters, when you're speaking, please identify who you are when you're speaking. This way, anyone that's on the phone audience knows who they're listening to. Any vote or motion, or any question, again, please identify yourself. Anyone that dials in or calls in and wants, let's see, let me go through dial-in instructions first, if you're calling in on audio conference only, and you want to ask a question, just hit star nine. And the host will be notified of your interest to ask a question, we will get to you. Or unmute yourself on a phone, it's star six. Board members, please try to reference materials by page number of the PDF if you print out the packet. And that, we will move on to our, one other reminder for anyone that's called in, we do meet till 10 o'clock this evening. As to how we continue after 10 o'clock, maybe potentially another night, depending on the number of petitions left, we'll decide then. So, the very first petition, the petition of the Preservation Society of Newport County, owner seeking two special use permits for agricultural special events on the Article 5, Section C5, to operate a fall lantern program and host a series of a maximum of 16 private events functions located in Green Animals Topiary Gardens at 354 and 380 Cory's Lane. Mr. Wadika, I know you have a conflict?
Yes, I do.
So, will you be recusing yourself?
Yes.
Okay. The chairman also has to recuse himself, my wife is an employee of the Preservation Society, so I will be recusing myself from this petition and stepping away. Mr. Borden, vice chairman, will be here, will be chairing this petition. So, on this petition here, it will be Vice Chairman Borden, Mr. Furell, Ms. Pavlakis, Mr. Reposa, and Ms. Horowitz.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, are you interested in approving minutes, or are you gonna pass on?
We're gonna pass on minutes, because we have a number, so we're gonna wait till next meeting.
Yes. Oh, they can see me? Oh, from there? Oh, okay, cool, all right. I don't see me, but that's fine. Oh, okay, all right. Okay. So, is there someone representing Green Animals?
William Landry.
Yes, is Mr. Landry?
Where'd he go?
Present?
He was, he was just on the panel. Yeah, he's there, he's muted, let me unmute him. Okay, he's unmuted.
Mr. Vice, Mr. Vice Chairman, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. William Landry, I'm a partner with Volition Kavanaugh in Providence, representing the Preservation Society of Newport County, the owner of Green Animals, and if it's your pleasure, we're prepared to proceed with some brief remarks by me, and then a few folks who are participating in the meeting also have some remarks to present.
Okay. My understanding is you're seeking two special use criterion approvals, is that correct?
It is correct, yes.
Okay, so, if you'd like to begin, you wanna start off with an introduction, and then you wanna go to the first special use presentation?
Actually, if it's your pleasure, Mr. Chair, I think that because these uses involve the same site and the same witnesses, and the same similar parking issues and so forth, that it might be more efficient for them to be presented directly. Indeed, that's the way they were advertised, as these two, two special use permits, they involve different types of events at different times of the year, but it is a very similar presentation. I think that would probably be the most expeditious way to proceed, and perhaps the record, the entire record can be the record for both applications.
That's fine. Go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I trust you're all familiar with the Green Animals site, and I hope you and your families have had an opportunity to visit it. For those that don't know much about it, it's the former Alice Brayton Estate, a favorite visiting spot for the late Jacqueline Kennedy and her children and other families through the decades. It's a little over seven acres, a rare example of a self-sufficient estate, combining formal topiaries, vegetable and herb gardens, and orchard, and a Victorian house overlooking Narrows and Bay. The main feature for viewing and walking, which is the primary activity at Green Animals, is a more than 80 unique topiary pieces, good overhead, they're many in the shape of animals that were created between, most of which were created between 1905 and 1985, and that are meticulously maintained. But the agriculture on the property involves more than the topiary. There are vegetable, fruit and vegetable gardens that produce thousands of pounds of product grown and harvested each year, most of which is given to the underserved through nonprofit entities on the island primarily. The staff includes a host of volunteers, and also full-time paid professional staff in horticulture and topiary. And there's a beech tree nursery on the site to grow and replace beech trees on Cook Island when they die. We have about 20,000 visitors that we host annually. It's a low-key, outdoor, family-friendly, and edifying experience. There's an annual children's party, an award-winning edible schoolyard program for children island-wide. But with all of that, even though Green Animals is one of the Preservation Society's most unique properties, it's also one of its most underutilized in terms of what it has to offer to the general public. And the two special use permits we're presenting tonight are designed to improve that situation. These applications are brought under the town's Agricultural Special Events Ordinance, the town adopted back in 2015. It recognized that venues that have agriculture at their core, including horticulture, of which topiary is a, is an example, could benefit if supported financially and appropriately by special events and programs. There are a number of examples, not limiting examples, but examples listed in the ordinance that include harvest fairs, festivals, indoor and outdoor concerts, weddings, receptions, corporate and private functions, all under the special permit regimen of the zoning board. And there are two special use permits sought here, and they involve different times of the year. The first would introduce to Green Animals a fall lantern program that would run from late August, late October rather, or so, to early January, possibly the first two weeks of January preceding Martin Luther King Day. And it's a program that would blend art and nature by interspersing within the natural topiary gardens, a beautiful, sophisticated, tranquil array of stationary, uniquely and softly lit animal and plant figures. You'll hear tonight, compactly as we can present it, how this concept has been introduced very successfully at properties of distinction throughout the world, how it relies on darkness as much as on light to generate its tranquil effects. The visitors are multi-generational and overwhelmingly family groups. The arrays are crafted uniquely and change yearly, but their effects are designed, in all cases, to be entirely focused on the immediate area of the array itself, emitting neither light nor sound beyond the property itself. Now, this property is also unique in that it has only two main abutters, one on each side, Portsmouth Abbey on one side and St. Philomena School on the other. And both of those neighbors are not only supporting, but assisting these events in being programmed and carried out. That's the first special use permit. The second special use permit, the same property obviously, involves some special events, weddings, receptions, private and corporate events that would be conducted on a few days each month, mostly on weekend, between the months of May through early October. These events would be tented, and their impacts completely limited to the property itself. We're requesting that the number of events be capped at 16, spread throughout that period, and that they be, I think, similar to what the Greenville Vineyards program is, where the events don't have to all be the same or on the same day, but there would be an annual notice provision of the dates that these events would take place, and type of events that they would be. Now, both of these applications involve activities and events that would occur between the time period of 4 o'clock to 9 o'clock, in the case of the lantern program, and 10 o'clock in the case of the special events, weddings. These events would occur after the school day, when they're conducted at the same time as the school, and after the school day has been completed, and after the traffic and impacts associated with the school day are over. St. Phil's has approximately 400 students plus staff. Abbey has approximately 400 students plus staff. And that would all be over with, and the impacts of these proposed events are very, very moderate in relation to what's happening there each day during the daytime. The events will be very carefully controlled and managed as to parking at St. Phil's, which is easily walkable right into the, to the, to the site. These are for the special events, the light, the, I'm sorry, the lighting program, the parking will be at St. Phil's. And overflow parking will be available at the Abbey, in the rare event that there's a need for overflow parking. We have a letter from St. Phil's providing 200 parking spaces to our center venue, as you'll learn in a few minutes, even on the busiest night, we're not, which would probably be some Saturday night perhaps, in the height of the season, in the winter, for the lighting program, we're expecting only about 85 cars for any one session of that night. These shows will be delivered in segments, that is, people will be allowed to walk through in segments of one hour on busy nights, and that will correspond to parking needs, you know, less than, significantly less than 100 nights, even on the busiest of nights. There'll also be controlled ticketed sales for the lighting program. This is not a walk-up event, there won't be a line, there won't be surprises. We will decide how many tickets are sold for each of the hours that people will be allowed to move through the topiary and the lighting lantern program, such that even on the busiest possible night, there will be fewer people moving through on that night than there is for one of the two schools on either side of us. It'll be about half as many people involved in these activities than there are during daytime. Now, as to both of these programs, they'll benefit from the experience of the Preservation Society in managing people, organizing events, handling managed parking, setting expectations, and setting up and taking down very efficiently, quickly, on time, without surprises, and without impacts. They manage a million people a year through their properties, and have countless, have had countless numbers of weddings, much larger than this, special events, much larger than this. And the top of the house staff, and most experienced staff in conducting those undertakings, will be involved in this one. In fact, the primary logistical person, Phil Pelletier, is himself a resident of Portsmouth, involved with St. Phil's, and very much invested in the, in the community, and in this, and in these programs. The Preservation Society, I think most people would agree, has gotten this down to a science, and has earned a well-deserved reputation for doing it well, doing it tastefully, and most of all, being a good neighbor. So, I'd like to efficiently present a few folks who can speak with specific expertise on topics that I think you'll be most interested in. The first is Bob Montgomery, who is from Canada, and who has been involved worldwide in undertaking and setting up and, and running these types of programs in other venues of great distinction. So, I'm going to, at this time, allow that, ask that Bob be recognized, I know that he's logged on, and to describe his, his background, and to tell us about how this lantern program works.
Yes, that, that's fine, I'm gonna recognize him, I would just ask him to swear to tell the truth.
I, I will.
Bob, so that, so that we don't interrupt each other too much here while we, we can't see each other, I'm gonna ask you to just first describe your background, tell us a little bit about your company, and how these types of programs got started, and how they're being implemented at, at other important venues.
Very good. Good evening, and thank you for the time. So, I'm the managing partner of a company called All Park Solutions. We're a themed entertainment company that has a background in stadiums, theme parks, museums, and we do work all over the world, and we've been doing this for a little bit more than 10 years. As a result of that work, we spawned off, six years ago, a new, a new wing for us, a new, a new business channel for us, which was, you know, producing these nighttime spectacular events. We've, in those six years, we've done something around 40, 40 events all over the world, in Santiago, Chile, in Miami, Dublin, Paris, Toronto, of course, back home for us. But, shows that are doing anywhere from 100,000 to almost 400,000 visits in 60 to 90 days, which is the length of time that our shows typically run. The, we use principally three materials, and you can see, get a good look at that from, from the pictures that are shown. We actually use porcelain, we use glass, and the predominant material that we use is actually stretched silk. So, the pictures that you're seeing are largely the stretched silk figures that are handmade with, with light metal frames to create a three-dimensional figure, and we will produce for any given festival several thousand, upwards of 6,000, 6,000 to 8,000 individual lanterns that make up the story and the theme that, that we would have for each particular venue. So, we're working with botanical gardens, we're working with historical attractions very much along the same lines as what we see with the Newport Mansions collection of properties. We work in some cases on public lands with municipal or government partners, so very consistent, I think, history with what, with, with what, what we do, and how that would fit at, at the Green Animal site. The lights actually are, for as large and as impactful as they can be, they have a life of about six months, and the joy of that is it allows us to renew the show every year, so we can come back with a different theme, and an entirely different, different show that can be, tell a story that might be of local importance, or depending on what our partner would look for, it could be something more fanciful. Shows are really popular, and I think probably, as, as Bill mentioned earlier, is that the, the, the most interesting thing for me, being an industry professional, is that really the broadest appeal, this kind of a nighttime spectacle has the broadest appeal of any, you know, business segment that I've ever worked with. So, it's not uncommon to have a date night for young people, to have adult couples come, seniors home come, families and extended families. So, it really has some unlimited potential, and especially, I think, for the period of time that we're talking about, which has the, it's a traditional holiday time, we associate Christmas with lights quite naturally. So, I think, I think the period of time that we're talking about, and what we're working with, I think, will be very successful.
Now, Bob, do I understand correctly that the actual images that are created specifically for Green Animals will be interspersed and work compatibly with the existing topiary gardens? Could you speak to that a little bit, please?
Yeah, I can, that's a, it's a really good point, is that because we're working very often in historically or culturally sensitive areas, one of the advantages of this type of a program is it has no lasting impact on the ground. So, it's completely removed. We work, where, where our first shows have started, I think we're now, this year will, will be our seventh year there in Bath, England, which is a 600-year-old historical estate, which is a Grade One-listed facility, and we're able to do an extensive, large show there, it's one of our largest, and it comes out with really no, no remaining impact on the facility. So, everything is taken away, we recycle the, the metal, and remove it completely, so that there's nothing that, that remains after the show is gone.
And Bob, could you speak to the issue of external impacts over the property line? I do realize that there are two major abutters, the Abbey and St. Phil's that are working with us, but in terms of them and any other abutters in the area, in terms of lighting and sound in particular, what, what is the experience of someone in the surrounding area?
So, so the, while, while this is very much a light festival, and, and it is all about, about lights, the, the fact that the lights are enclosed in the structures themselves has a muting effect to it. The measurements that we've used, so, so our most extreme measurement would be about 1,200 lumens, which is something like a 75-watt light bulb, so it's not overbearing. The vast majority of these lanterns would be more like, no, no brighter than a 40-watt light bulb, about 400, 400, 450 lumens. So, the, the, the reach of the, of the, the light emitted is, is really very much limited to the, to, to the property with any, any level of intensity. Each of the, the sets, I mentioned, we have, you know, we'll have thousands, you know, of lanterns themselves, but they're organized around 25 to 30 individual sets that are combined together to make whatever, the particular theme and scene that we're looking for. That does have localized sound, it's very much in the way of back, background music, and each of those, the individual speakers that are, that are attached to a set is set to a level that we're even, the next set beside it does not hear the, hear the music. So, this would have, have no, no sort of sound pollution impact on even our closest neighbors.
And, and do I understand correctly that these, these images or sets are concealed with silk so that the light is really, is really masked by a, by a skin of silk?
Yeah. So, so all the lanterns have, with almost no exceptions, have, are all lit from the interior of, of the structure. And then we cover that silt either with, either, we cover the structure either with silk or glass or even porcelain. So they just create different, different lights. We use glass that is filled with colored water. And so we were able to create some spectacular lanterns using that, that, that technique. So there really isn't any, any of that sort of naked exposed, like exposed light bulbs and, and the brightness that you might see from that. You can see really, I think, from the pictures that it's not necessarily about, about overwhelming you with, with the power of, and the brightness of the lights. It's much more about the art and the artistry and the, these are all handmade. So, so you're really seeing this as a, it, it's probably more accurate to think of it as an art exhibition that tells a story and has a theme rather than just a simple light show.
And as we can see from the pictures, the, the, the light is designed to work with the darkness to create the, the serenity type effect that you, that you desire here?
The, the other thing just to mention is that, that, that we also work with the lights to make sure that we have a safe light level around, around the local area. So for, so we'll, we'll place the, the, the lights in, in the situation where, where there's enough lumens for people to safely move around, around the grounds.
So I, I mentioned earlier about a, a design to, especially on busier nights, to have the folks move, only a certain number of tickets sold for an hour or so, and to move folks through the array from one point to another, sometimes perhaps with two different directions so that the experience is completed in sufficient time for the next hours folks to, to, to move through it. And could you tell us how that, how that works and how you're able to program things at your other venues to be able to predict reasonable precision that folks will move in and through and to another place and be on their way by the time another installment?
The next group comes. It, we have done, as I mentioned, almost 40 of these shows. There is some operational science behind how we work with this, with this. Depending on the size of the show, they'll, sorry to say this, but it, we're, we're looking for about one kilometer. So about 0.6 of a mile to 0.8 of a mile worth of pathway, which we certainly would manage, manage on this, on the site. That gives us a good, a good criteria of the kind of average capacity we have. And this is a directed show. So you, we will, we will move people through the grounds in a intentional way and the, the lights and the sets themselves move people along. We also build in an ability to be able to increase the capacity of the show based on the demand, which you might see typically on a, on a Saturday night or on a, as we get closer to the Christmas holidays, where we, we're able to distribute people both directions. So the shows can be, you can turn left and turn right and that distributes the, the attendance to that festival at that given period of time. Immediately it disperses them and it allows, allows the individual lantern sets to be viewed by the, by the maximum amount of people. We, we typically expect to see a turn. So at, at that length of show, we expect a, a length of stay to something, to be somewhere around one hour. That's how we would design the show. And that would give us as many as, as four or five turns of new attendance through that, through that period. So it is, it is, it is guided in its design. We're not putting people on a stopwatch to, to do it, but the natural flow of the, of the show and of some of the animations that are part of it move people along within that one hour length of stay.
And in, in terms of your experience with the, the, the number of people per cars, is that something you've studied and, and have down to a predictable level as to the, the numbers that will arrive with each, with each vehicle?
Yeah, we do. It's, this is very much part, part of what we do as our core business. Most of our work is related to new attractions. So when we're designing parking lots for a theme park or water park or a stadium parking lot, we are typically using a number between 3.4 and 3.6 people per car. In this, in this case, we have looked at, at 3.4 people per car to be, to be conservative. In actuality, because of the, the, the extended family profiles that we, that we typically attract in almost all of our shows, that would certainly be on the low end of, of, of those numbers. But that, that is what any attraction planner would, would, would be using somewhere between 3.4 and 3.6.
Okay. And I, the, the, you've used the word show a few times. The, the arrays, as I understand it, don't change from season to season, correct? And so the show is, is more like a showing, people moving through the way they would during the, the daytime in the summer viewing the topiary?
Yeah, it's, it is, um, yeah, it, it almost is a nighttime application of what, what, the way the green animals is used by guests today. The, the distinct difference is, is that, so this show would stay the same throughout its run of, from end of October through to mid-January. But at the end of that, that, that show, that we'd hope to come back and bring an entirely different show with a different story. So we are typically developing a theme, working together with our, our local partner and then executing that and then revisiting it. And so what we see in our, our shows typically is, is growth over the years. It becomes almost a tradition for families to come and see what's new, new each year. So it's a, it's a static show for the period of time that it, that it is running. But annually, we can, we can do a wholesale change, change of theme and story.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Montgomery. Is there anything you'd like, further you'd like to add at this point?
I don't think so. Thank you, though.
Thank you.
At this point, I'll ask board members if they have any questions. Mr. Montgomery? Oh, sorry. Please unmute before you speak. Do board members have any questions of Mr. Montgomery?
No, I don't have any.
Okay. All right. Mr. Landry, you can proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'd like, that was our longest witness. We've got a few other folks to address much, in much shorter fashion, specific topics. And the first is John Rodman, please.
Good evening, Bill.
John Rodman is, if he could be recognized.
Yes. Mr. Rodman, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
If you were here, I'd ask you to raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth. But for now, we'll just assume you're going to tell the truth.
Okay, Mr. Mr. Rodman, could you just say a little bit about your background and, and role at the Preservation Society?
Yes, I am the Director of Museum Experience. So the operation of our visitation programs is my responsibility. I have been with the Preservation Society for a little over 20 years and have been in charge of visitor operations for the last 12. And our visitor operations includes everything from Green Animals to The Breakers. And as previously mentioned, we handle about a million admissions a year through our properties. And my principal responsibility is to provide the communications and marketing support and then actually lead the teams who provide the guided tours and visitor experience.
And could you tell us the, the way you went about determining the best way to anticipate and manage the folks that come to visit? Let's start with the, the lighting program. And to be able to be almost virtually certain that, that it was well within the available parking and, and, and traffic parameters that you desired to achieve?
Well, we've been using digital ticketing at the Preservation Society for over 13 years. And we use our controlled inventory time ticket system for a number of different kinds of activities ranging from guided tours for 15 people to the grand tasting at our Wine and Food Festival, which averages about 2,000 people over a four-hour period. And to the flower show, which can have as many as 4,000 people on the ground at Roscoe at one time. And basically, we have an inventory-controlled advanced ticket system. We can set the inventory and we can set the time. So even though Bob speaks of the visitors taking an hour going through the property, but we actually will allow admissions more periodically, more frequently than once an hour. More likely once every 15 minutes, we'll add a number of people so that there's a fairly smooth even flow of people coming through. And as I, as I said, we handle about a million admissions a year. The Breakers itself deals with about 450,000. So we have a lot of experience facilitating people passing through a space, enjoying themselves, and, and most of the time flowing very nicely from in to out. And that, that approach is how we'll handle the visitors to the Lantern Festival.
And you can, and so we don't take, we don't, you won't take walk-up ticket sales like, if people are familiar with the very dissimilar lighting, Halloween lighting festival at Roger Williams Park, for example, where people just walk in and buy tickets. That's not the type of operation we're looking at here at all, correct?
No. Very honestly, our expectation is that the demand for this program is going to allow us to, to very nearly sell out on many nights of the week. And frankly, the, the way we will manage that is through variable pricing. There will be incentives in terms of lower prices for, let's say, Tuesday night and be a considerably higher price on Saturday night. And so we're able to know in advance how many people are coming to manage the demand. And of course, since we're working from a period of late October into early January, we'll be able to progressively learn from the public's buying habits and be able to manage the flow very comfortably.
All right. And I'll, also we'll spare the board all of this detail, but I, I, I do know that this has been broken down by day. And for example, on a, on a Monday night, you know, the average per night for, for any one-hour segment is approximately 148 people. That might be your low. And then your high would be a Saturday night where we're talking about 300 people, 307 or so people for, for that, for an hour segment and, and corresponding flows and traffic and so forth. But that 307 is about 100 people less than go in and out of St. Phil's, which is be about 400 just for the students. And then there's another 400 every day, except for the students who live on campus on the other side of the street at, at the Portsmouth Abbey, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And then at 3.4 persons per car, that 307 kind of outside limit on tickets that would be sold corresponds to about 85 cars. And when in fact, we, we have the ability to access 200 parking spaces walking right next door to St. Phil's, correct?
Correct.
We, we've got a plan that there will be no, there will be no surprises, correct?
That is correct. We, we approach this with the attitude that we know that the public likes a good orderly experience. They are most comfortable, as you are probably well aware in your own experience, when I know what to expect, when I get there, I get what I expect and things move in a, in a good, smooth fashion. And so we have, we have staff who have been with us for years who know their way around this kind of customer service. And we look forward to being able to do at Green Animals at night, what we do at Green Animals and all of our other properties by day.
And one, one more thing I'd like you to address, and that is the town of Portsmouth aspect of this. Could you speak to the issue of special arrangements for town people, town businesses and the way that this will be promoted on, on the Preservation Society's web presence?
Sure. I'd absolutely love to do that. I think one of the most useful benefits is going to be that as this program proceeds, it will actually increase people's awareness of green animals and the traffic at green animals. And I think one of the principal beneficiaries in all of this will be the people who operate places like Fieldstones and 15 Point Road, Foodworks, Public House and so forth. And one of the things that we will be doing is promoting the establishments in Portsmouth because we believe that people are going to be wanting to be visiting these, this, this wonderful show and they'll have their family with them. And experience shows that stopping to get a bite to eat is, is part of this experience. I think that it's, it's one of those things that will help build traffic for a lot of activities in Portsmouth. One of the things that, that we do in Newport, that we will do in Portsmouth is provide free admission for Portsmouth residents. So we'll, we'll have nights when the lighting program is free. People will still have to buy a ticket as a Portsmouth resident, so they'll have a reservation. And likewise, we'll, we'll build into that the kind of things we do with our, with our admission at Green Animals. And then obviously Portsmouth becomes far more heavily promoted in our media because with regard to the Green Animals nighttime program, we're going to be promoting the, the Lantern Festival in Portsmouth. So Portsmouth's name itself becomes part of what I think is fairly well-recognized as the very powerful marketing capability of the Preservation Society. And it's a partnership we're very proud of. We're very, very proud of the relationship we've had with Portsmouth through the years at Green Animals. And we'd just love to grow it and expand it.
Thank you, Mr. Rodman. That's all I have. Mr. Chair?
Do board members need to be muted or? Board members, do you have any questions of Mr. Rodman?
I don't.
Okay. Do you want to proceed with your petition? I have several questions. Okay. Do you want to proceed with your petition? I have several questions, but I'm going to hold them until the end.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next person would be Mr. Phil Pelletier.
I don't see his name. I don't see his name. Is he Philip? Someone sign on?
Yes. Yes. Philip Pelletier.
Yes. Okay. I'm moving him up to panelists now. Do we see Philip? There. Okay, he's unmuted now. Philip, do you swear to tell the truth? Philip Pelletier, are you present? I'm not sure if you stepped away from your computer. Are you present? Mr. Landry, I'm not sure if you want to go to another presenter, but...
I'll do that. I'll do that, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Pelletier doesn't seem to be present.
I'm confident that one of his colleagues here is probably texting him as we, as we speak. That being the case, I think I'd like to have Mr. Boris, James Boris, introduced, please.
Okay.
I'm here.
Boris, do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Boris, could you describe your, your position at the Preservation Society and your general duties?
I'm the chief financial officer, so I'm in charge of the money, taxes, insurance, IT, general stuff like that.
And that applies to the Green Animals as well, correct?
Yes, indeed.
And I'd like you to give the board a sense, because we're talking about an agricultural activity, existing agricultural activity, about the revenue stream that's currently enjoyed by the property, and the dollar value of the vegetables and fruits that are produced and harvested on the site at this time.
Well, as I think was indicated earlier, we have about 20,000 visitors every year who come to look at Topiary Gardens. And our admissions revenue just from tickets that were sold directly at that site last year was $126,000. And I make the qualification because we bring the Breakers and buy a five-man ticket. The Breakers records all that revenue, but one of those tickets will be used, for example, at Green Animals. So that's actually the minimum experience and exposure revenue impact that Green Animals has. We also have, as was indicated earlier, a community garden. And we harvest upwards of 2,000 pounds of vegetables every year. I believe most of it is given away to Lucy's Hearth and other nonprofits. And I believe that last year, a value was assigned to that harvest of about $3,700.
And that's, that's a, that's a regular occurrence year in and year out, correct?
Correct.
And there's also a plant sale that takes place during the, during the year?
That's right. That happens in the spring. And I believe that grosses about $5,000.
That's all I had of Mr. Boris. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
By the way, I did call Phil Pelletier, and he says he's, he thinks he's logged in, but apparently he's not.
All right. So we'll try to go to him next. Before we go to Mr. Pelletier, do board members have any questions of Mr. Boris? I'm assuming the answer is no. So, Mr. Landry, do you want to proceed?
Yes, thank you. I, could we try if, to see if we can get Mr. Pelletier?
Yes.
I'm sending Mr. Pelletier the link I used to get in, so hopefully he'll be able to get in.
I just invited him at the bottom of the screen where you can invite. So he was going to hang up the phone and try again, get out of this and try again.
So Trudy, is he joining just by telephone?
No, he was joining by telephone and screen. But he, he said he could hear all of us, but he, you, we all could not hear him. I asked him if he was on mute, and he said that he was not on mute. So I don't know what's going on.
Okay, see. Hold on. Let's try this again.
There is a Philip on the screen.
Yeah, about now. Okay, I believe we're ready to go. Mr. Landry, do you want to introduce Philip Pelletier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Pelletier, are you with us? We can't hear you. I'm not sure if you need to unmute your screen.
No, he's unmuted at the moment. You have a little red icon down at the bottom left if you were...
Okay. Yeah, it would be better if he called in at this point. Yes, he can certainly call in at this point.
Does, Jim, do you know how to do that?
They, they need to give us the number.
You're listening, Phil. I'll top it down, too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's in the agenda.
I haven't...
Yeah, we have it up on the screen.
I didn't see the number on the screen now.
The number should be on the screen now. Can you see it?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Okay, I don't see it. Jim, can you text that to Philip?
Just did.
Okay, thanks.
And he'll need the, the meeting ID as well, that he...
Oh, your own number. He's also going to need the meeting ID number?
Yep.
So, Mr. Landry, perhaps you can tell us a little bit about Mr. Pelletier's title and what he's going to be speaking to?
Yes. Mr. Pelletier has been a facilities person, that he's a resident of Portsmouth and involved in enormously in special events over the years, planning, logistics, carrying them out. He's made, personally made arrangements with St. Phil's and with Portsmouth Abbey for the parking arrangements, the, the use of 200 parking spaces right next door that are walkable right into this venue and this program for the lighting program without anyone having to go back up to Cory's Lane. He also has a staff of attendants who will direct people driving into the property to that St. Phil's parking lot in a very organized fashion and in a supervised fashion, consistent with how they, they manage things. The arrangement made, and both of these schools have supplied letters also for this proceeding with their authorization. And by the way, we do realize that the ordinance provides for a recorded covenant in land evidence records. And we obviously would expect that as a condition to approve, and for that to be approved by the town solicitor. Abby has provided an additional 100 spaces to the extent that that's necessary as a backup, or in the unlikely event that the St. Phil's has some special event on a weekend evening, which is when we really need the, the parking. So I think we've already established that the busiest night for a segment of this program would be 307 people or 85 cars. So we have more than that number of cars in reserve at the Abbey in the unlikely event that we wouldn't have, wouldn't be able to have as many vehicles at St. Phil's. And they've also worked out an arrangement where if they have one night or two, where they have something special on the weekend, which is unlikely, they will use the parking in the back and, and reserve back of St. Phil's and reserve this area for our, for our, our program. If the Abbey is utilized, the, the, it's not as easy walking. It's right across the street, but there would obviously have to be a crossing guard. And there would also be a shuttle that would pick folks up from the Abbey parking lot and bring them right to the venue, so that there isn't any question about safety. And that, that's our primary, primary concern. In terms of the special events that don't involve the lighting program, Mr. Pelletier has advised that we have 30 parking spaces on, onsite at, at the Green Animals, and then in the front parking lot, and then the capacity to add another 20 or 25 or so on, on internal roadways and other places where employee parking could take place, such that we would not ever have a special event that would require us to use either St. Philomena's or the Portsmouth Abbey, that that parking would be entirely valet parking, entirely on the Green Animals site itself. He would also testify that, that tented special event and wedding experiences are something that the Preservation Society has particular expertise in, that the wedding tent would be on the south side of the property over near St. Phil's. It would be sandwiched in between some accessory barn-type buildings at St. Phil's and the Topiary Gardens and building on the Green Animals site, not, not a conspicuous location. The tent would be such as to accommodate 150 people at maximum. It would be a walled tent, but the target number would be about 125 or so. And there would be a separate caterer's tent that would accommodate approximately 30 people. And that these, these two facilities used in conjunction with each other would be more than adequately managed onsite for the special events. And we are requesting, you know, on a trial basis, 16 special events would be a few each month, primarily on the weekends. The nighttime events would always be over by 10:00. That's the time of night that the town's ordinance, noise ordinance kicks in, with which we would always be in compliance. There are folks on site with noise meters to ensure that that, that that is the case. And I'm talking about weddings, obviously corporate and business events would probably involve far fewer people. He is also very, very familiar with the wedding venue at Glen Manor. He's had the, Preservation Society has had the pleasure of referring a substantial amount of business to Glen Manor. The weddings at Glen Manor tend to be a different type of wedding with a different type of customer. And so we, we think these two venues could be very, very compatible and, and could assist Portsmouth in being more readily identified as a location and a venue for, for wedding events. And, you know, that, I couldn't say all of that as, as well with the ring of truth and genuine experience as Phil could. He's a fixture with the Preservation Society. You know, he's so well-known, and always that person that's organizing everything succinctly and fastidiously. But I would just ask Mr. Chair, in case he's not able to join us, there's nothing that I have just said that I don't believe that Mr. Rodman and, and Mr. Boris would not be able to affirm, they've already been sworn, that they would be, will be able to affirm to a reasonable degree of certainty based on their own many, many years of experience with respect to these activities. And I'd, I'd like to ask, if I may, that if either Mr. Rodman or Mr. Boris would be willing to do that.
Bill, absolutely. Phil has worked for the Preservation Society for, I believe, 44 years. He has emceed, handled just innumerable events. I remember the National Governors Conference from many years ago. Every year, there's a CNO conference of all the navies of all the world. He handles that. Secret Service is involved. He is the consummate professional. And he, he knows Green Animal, and he knows events. And he is completely on top of this, and everything you described is, is accurate.
We just won't ask him to join a Zoom call. We just won't ask him to join a Zoom call.
I think we're comfortable with your assessment of his expertise. Mr. Landry, do you have any other presenters?
I do. I, I'd like to ask that Paul Bannon be recognized. He's a traffic expert and I'm, I'm gonna ask him to just very succinctly provide an opinion as to how he thinks that the traffic operation will work here and whether there'll be any external impacts from that.
Mr. Landry, I'd have to ask you if you want to recognize him as an expert witness in the field of traffic?
I, I would. I, I don't know if the board is familiar with.
Yes.
If they are, then most certainly. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for asking.
I, I would ask the rest of the board if they're comfortable with recognizing him as an expert witness. And we would want to take a vote in terms of whether we want to recognize him as an expert. Board members, first, do you want to give us a little bit of a background for board members that may not be familiar with his expertise?
You can hear me, correct?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Paul Bannon, B-A-N-N-O-N. Associate Adjudicator Group, been traffic and transportation engineer in the state of Rhode Island for over 35 years, working on Department of Transportation projects, private development projects, from traffic studies, safety studies, working for the STC, State Traffic Commission. I've testified before this board in, in over 40 communities in Rhode Island over the years.
I'm familiar with your testimony. I would ask board members, do we want to recognize Mr. Bannon as an expert in traffic? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Okay, Mr. Bannon, please proceed. I'm sorry? Okay.
Do you want to?
Let's go one at a time. I'm sorry. Mr. Reposa, do you recognize Mr. Bannon as an expert in traffic?
I do. Recognize him as an expert in traffic.
Thank you. Kathy, do you recognize him as an expert?
Yes, I do.
Sue, do you recognize him as an expert in traffic?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Wadika, do you recognize him as an expert? I'm sorry? Oh, you recused. I'm sorry. Ben, do you recognize him as an expert in the field of traffic?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay, I also recognize him. Mr. Bannon, please proceed.
Okay, I'll, I'll prompt him if I may, Mr. Chair, and ask Mr. Bannon to describe his, his role in this project and, and how he has gone about analyzing the potential traffic capacity, volume, circulation and safety issues associated with the proposals that we've, that we've described, addressing most specifically the lantern program, which would, which would involve external traffic impacts.
We were asked to assist in the assessment of operations and impact to the local servicing roadways. Part of that effort, we conducted a review of the project area and reviewed information provided by the applicant to understand what they were proposing, what their site access, circulation was and where the parking would be for the facility and, and the, and the use of Green Animals for the lantern program. We did obtain traffic counts early, or actually through March. We were able to capture St. Philomena's function, but the Abbey had been on term break. So we do have an understanding what the traffic volumes are on the road. Then we inventory the physical roadway conditions, the width of the road, speed limit, to determine the adequacy of the roadway. Then we estimated what the future conditions were based on the information that was provided by the applicant on their program. We also obtained accident data from the local police department to determine if there were any safety concerns that presently exist potentially to be addressed to accommodate the additional traffic. And then we worked with them to assess their operations and assist them in, in making sure that safe and added access to the events could be provided. Cory's Lane, it's a low-speed, 20 to 24-foot wide roadway posted at 25 miles per hour. Today it services roughly a low volume of 2,000 vehicles per day. Of that 2,000, probably approximately 75% of that is associated with the two schools. Right now, today, without the schools operating, it services about 400 to 450 vehicles per day. So it's a very low-volume roadway and it's highly impacted by those two uses. The morning peak occurs 8:00 to 9:00 a.m., associated with the school's arrival period. Roughly 500 vehicles per hour are on that road during that morning peak. The afternoon, between 3:00 and 4:00, it's roughly 300 vehicles per hour. After that 4:00 o'clock period, volume substantially decreased to about 30 vehicles in an hour. And that's when the lantern program during that fall period would be in operation. So, you know, the roadway is used to handling 500-plus cars an hour during its peaks. And when those peaks related to the school are not a low roadway, volumes are extremely low. And we would operate during those low-volume conditions. The, is testified to earlier, the lantern program will be managed relative to access, the number of people that will be arriving on an hourly basis. That, so that in itself will control and they have total control of, over the, as they start to see how they handle the volume of traffic based on the number of patrons that visitors come on an evening, nightly basis. So they can manage it up or down. If, if things are fine, they can, you know, internally, people walking through the site, it's not crowded, they can manage that flow. The primary parking for the facility, for the Green Animals, will be St. Philomena's, where 200 spaces will be available. There'll be defined paths, separate for pedestrians, but the Green Animals, so they don't have to walk through parking lots, they don't have to walk on the road to access the site. So they'll be directed into a parking lot, they'll be directed into a parking space, and then they'll be directed walking into the Green Animals site and, and entryway. So, and then as they leave and, and it's that, that hour turnover, the parking attendants, we estimate between four and, and, and seven attendants on a given night, depending on what night it is and, and the peak condition, that they will identify open parking spaces and, and shuttle people in to promote quick, efficient operations.
So do you have an opinion to a reasonable degree of certainty in your profession that this, this proposal doesn't threaten to adversely impact traffic, circulation, volume, safety considerations?
Based on existing conditions and the proposed conditions as presented to us, we feel that adequate, safe access can be provided. It will be adequately managed. They have partners or, you know, there are people that are butters that they're working with to manage any condition and will avoid conflicts between the uses and also work with public safety officials if any issues do arise. And again, they can manage the number of people that come there on a nightly basis. So it, it's easily handled as opposed to an open venue.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. I know that Cory's Lane is controlled by a traffic device at West Main Road. There are a couple of residential butters on Cory's Lane. Do you anticipate any traffic issues, possibly 307, 307 people per hour for the lantern ceremony disrupting the residents on Cory's Lane?
Absolutely not. That translates into roughly 90 vehicles based on the, the occupancy. So the, the school peaks, you're over 200 cars per hour in, in one direction. So we're well, well under what the, what occurs on the road on a daily basis during, during the peak hours.
And my next question is, do you see any need for a police detail to handle these events for either weddings or the lantern?
The, the weddings are, are actually a small event because they'll, they're outside-tented events, maximum size of 120. That 120 turns into maybe 50, 60 cars that arrive and then leave four to five hours later. So weddings, weddings are a low-volume generator and all those cars will be handled on the Green Animals property. The, we anticipate and, and are, are used to having attendance at the, at their, at the facilities that they manage and we will have attendance at, at these locations. The, they should easily be managed, but we were, were willing to work with the public safety offices at any time if it's identified that, that they would be necessary. But we don't feel at this point they would be. And it's not going to be a, an immediate condition. It's something that they'll manage. You'll have different nights that are, your weekdays are slower. So you'll understand over time what the demand is and relative to cars and, and patrons per hour. So it's not going to be a one-shot deal where, you know, it, it could be chaos. It'll be managed. And again, with the numbers that they're, they're looking at, you're, you're talking, you know, under 100 vehicles per hour, which is, is well under capacity, conditions, and, and is serviced daily on the road without issue.
Board members, anyone have any questions of Mr. Bannon?
No.
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 Mr. Chairman, this is Ben Farrell. I do have a question for Mr. Bannon.
Yes, please proceed, Ben.
Oh, Mr. Bannon, do you anticipate any difficulty with emergency vehicles accessing this site, given that there's, it appears to just be one-way?
No, um, the, they will easily be able to access the site because no one's going past St. Philomena's. If any emergency happens on the Green Animals property, they will use the Cory's Lane entrance into the site. They will not be, or interface with any of the parking lot areas or that would be more congested for, for parking. So, you know, they can easily get to and from the site itself.
I was actually wondering also about emergencies that could take place in the parking areas.
Well, the, they will have, the parking areas are, are large enough and again, there are attendants there. So there should not be congestion that would hinder emergency vehicles.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir.
Any other board members, questions of Mr. Bannon?
No.
Okay, Mr. Landry, you can proceed.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one more, one more person, very important person, Executive Director of the Preservation Society, Trudy Cox, who would just like to make a few, a few remarks.
I'm just going to do a very quick wrap-up. Thank you.
Before you do that, can you please swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do. And I want to commend Mr. Landry for knowing our special events operation so well. You really did a good job in the place of Philip Pelletier. But I just want to draw the attention of this board to the fact that, in the view of the Preservation Society, Green Animals is a truly wonderful gem that has yet to be discovered, even though it's been around for more than 100 years. And we believe that both of these proposals will give people an opportunity to get to know the property better. And I think that you would all agree that it is very special. We love the idea of people starting out their marriages at Green Animals. We love the idea of giving children and parents an opportunity to enjoy the artistry of those lanterns that you saw pictures of in the middle of winter to just brighten their lives. I think the one thing that I really want to emphasize, and I'm sorry you couldn't hear from Philip tonight, is that, as was pointed out before, we give more than 1 million tours a year. We know a lot about handling large groups of people. We give, we put on many weddings. We put on big events like the Newport Flower Show and the Wine and Food Festival and Coaching Weekend, which comes to Portsmouth, and many, many other activities. I think that the one thing that we're really good at is handling crowds of people, putting on spectacular, sophisticated, beautiful events. And so I hope that you will agree that this will be a benefit to Portsmouth economically and psychically and spiritually and from a tourism perspective and that we can count on you for your support. And we look forward to working with the town of Portsmouth in any way that we can.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
No.
No.
Okay, Mr. Landry, do you have any other participants in your presentation?
We, we do not, Mr. Chair. You've been very generous with your time. We know we weren't scheduled to take, to take this much time and, and we're thankful that we've had it. So I, I, anything that I would add right now would be redundant of what was already presented. I, I think Mr. Ashiola has some letters from St. Phil's and.
Yes.
The Abbey and perhaps from other members of the public as well. But beyond that, we have nothing further to present, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, I, I do have some questions. I actually have several questions, but I will read into the record. I'm wondering if our secretary, Mr. Farrell, has those letters and would like to read them into the record. He does not. Okay, so that being the case, I will read them into the record. This is from Portsmouth Abbey School dated May 11th. On behalf of the Portsmouth Abbey, we plan to allow you to use our upper parking lot for overflow parking, approximately 100 cars for the lighting event at Green Animals at an agreed-upon date from late October to early January. The Preservation Society will provide parking attendance, security and all necessary insurance. Sincerely, John Perara, Assistant Headmaster, Portsmouth Abbey. We also have another letter, which is from. We also have another letter, which is from St. Philomena's School dated May 11th. To whom it may concern, this letter serves as recognition of our neighborly partnership with the Green Animals Topiary Gardens to support the use of their public evening events in the fall and winter of 2020 and '21 by allowing use of our 200 parking spaces on campus, 324 Cory's Lane. The Newport Preservation Society has worked to secure staffing that will manage the parking on our campus, and while visitors will enjoy this illuminated event. St. Philomena's School and Green Animals have a long relationship of supporting our community and serving as good neighbors. We are confident that this lasted endeavor will be a great success and bring joy to all of us during these challenging times. Sincerely, Ben Cadero, Principal. I don't believe there are any other correspondence into the record. So I'm going to open it up to questioning from board members, and I'm going to start off. Mr. Landry, my first question is in regards to the lantern special use permit, hours of operation. Are you proposing 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chair.
And for the weddings and receptions, are they, as stated in your petition, was they were going to be Fridays and Saturdays? Are you limiting them to Fridays and Saturdays?
I think we might walk that back. I understand from Mr. Pelletier, based on discussions this week, there may be a rare wedding event. They're not common at all, but if something were to come through for a Tuesday evening, we would like to be able to accommodate that.
Okay. So Ben, you would like to have weddings available, in theory, seven days a week?
Correct, if that is found acceptable to the board.
And I believe stated in your petition was the weddings would be from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.? But I believe someone mentioned that earlier it was 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. So is it 4:00 p.m. or is it 6:00 p.m.?
I think that we'd like to have the flexibility to have it be at 4:00. If there is a, but if the board's preference is to have to delay it till 6:00.
That's fine. That's fine. I was just, I'm just trying to get some clarity in regards to what your petition is requesting.
Understood.
So the wedding request, wedding special events request is from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Correct.
In regards to the number of people, are you limiting it to 120 or 150?
I would propose to limit it to 150, with the understanding that the target group that works well for an event like this is 120.
And in regards to the lantern ceremony, will alcohol be served during the lantern ceremony?
I'm going to ask Trudy to answer that. I think that's a possibility. An apple cider type alcoholic component with proper permitting is something we have discussed.
I want to just, Phil is on the line right now, Bill. Philip is on the line, and he wanted to make it clear that the weddings are really from 5:00 to 10:00. And in terms of alcoholic beverages, I think a lot will depend on what the town of Portsmouth says about that. Do you want to answer that? Okay, for weddings, yes. For weddings, the alcohol goes through the caterer's license, which is a Class P1 license, he wants you to know. That's how all of our weddings are done.
Okay. So in regards to the lanterns, will there be alcoholic beverages served during the lantern ceremonies?
Will there be alcoholic beverages served? It's a possibility, but we haven't that far. I think a lot depends on you all, Portsmouth.
The other question I have in regards to preservation events, you mentioned that you host weddings. Do you serve alcohol at those special events? And is it monitored by, I think it's called TIP employees or TIP certified?
A TIP certified, yes. Yes, they are. Sorry. All caterers have TIPS qualifications, and they are overseen by the catering staff and by Philip Pelletier's staff.
Okay. My next question is in regards to the wedding and special events in regards to amplified music. Will there be amplified music in regards to bands and noise?
The next question is, yes, there will be amplified music. However, most of my guys have designated, because we keep it well below the public level, which is 65 to the property line up until 10, and then that stops at 10.
So you broke up a little bit, but my understanding is you intend to comply with the Portsmouth noise ordinance?
Absolutely, yes. That's very much something that's on our minds all the time in Newport, so we're well aware that we really have to, as good neighbors, be in line with what your regulations are.
Okay. I'm going to open it up to other board members for questions for Mr. Landry or any of his participants this evening. Board members?
Kathy speaking, I have none.
Okay.
Sue, I have none.
Okay. Eric?
Eric, I have no questions at this time.
Bill? Oh, I'm not. Ben, sorry.
I do have one question. Everything else has been answered. Particularly during the lantern events, will there be police security on site?
Yes. Yes, we intend to have, we have Preservation Society attendance and private security on site.
Very good. Thank you very much. That was my only question.
Okay. So, there is an attendee that has his hand raised, so we are going to recognize this person at this point.
Oh, that would be me.
Yep. Yes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Oh, my. Millicella, 74 Naragansett Boulevard, Rhode Island.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
Of course.
Yes. Please proceed.
Yes. So sorry. Yes, I just would like to support the petition. I think it'd be great for Portsmouth, great for the community. Economic value is great for the town. As you said, the local restaurants will benefit if they're open, and just wanted to support what they're doing. And I think it'd be great for the people in Portsmouth, too. It sounds like a wonderful event.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I do have one other question in regards to the free admission for Portsmouth residents. Is that going to be on certain days, or is it going to be all the time? Or how is that going to be structured?
I think I can take that. I think I can take that question. So the opportunity for free admission can be afforded on a limited basis every day, but there would be certain days when we would be able to afford a lot of access. And it would be one of those matters where the access is available, again, on a reservation basis.
The record, that was John Rodman.
Yes, that was, for the record, that was John Rodman. I'm not sure. Mike, can they hear you when you speak? Okay, all right. Okay, Mr. Landry, do you want to sum up your petition? And in particular, I'd like you to address the special use criterion, why this should be approved for both petitions, the lantern petition as well as the special events petition. I'd like you to go through each category of the special use criterion and explain to the board why it meets the criteria.
Well, thank you for asking, Mr. Chair. That's exactly what I was planning to do with my final remarks. The first is that the desired use will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. As you've heard, the whole project has been structured to have no external impacts beyond our boundary lines, visual, audible, parking, traffic, safety, security. That was a theme that every witness addressed. Will it be compatible with neighboring land uses? We believe that the record supports that. It's designed to be compatible with the Topiary Gardens and to be a very similar experience, a serene walking experience and enhanced appreciation of nature. Our neighbors have described us as a good neighbor, and they feel that this would be consistent with that. The third is that it won't create a nuisance or hazard in the neighborhood. We think that's satisfied for the same reasons I've described. Next, that adequate protection is afforded to the surrounding property by the use of open space and planting. That applies more, I think, to new uses. Our whole use involves open spaces and planting. That's what we're all about. The next is safe vehicular access and adequate parking provided. We've demonstrated that the parking availability to us is many times what would be needed on our busiest night, and at least three times more than, or almost three times more than what would be required on our busiest night, many times more than on our average night. The next is there'd be control of noise, smoke, odors, lighting, and any other objectionable feature. The operation itself doesn't produce noise over the property line. As to special events, Mr. Pelletier indicated we're going to be in full compliance with the noise ordinance. The music is interior to the tent. The tent is a walled tent. It's located in an area that's blocked on one side by barn buildings from St. Phil's, and there's been a great effort to make sure that we will be in compliance, and there's a great record of experience by the Preservation Society having to meet similar constraints for weddings in Newport. The next is that solar rights of the butters are provided for. This is a nighttime program, and the special events will be in the afternoon, but we're not creating any obstruction to the sun or any solar issues. The next is that the proposed special use will be in conformance with the purposes and intent of the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. This is a special use permit use under the zoning ordinance. The ordinance is deemed to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. If we satisfy the criteria, the comprehensive plan also has aspirations for tourism and economic development when it can be done in an appropriate and controlled way, and that's what we're proposing. The last criterion is that it be consistent with the purposes and designs for the development of the town center district. That one's not applicable because this proposal doesn't involve the town center district. So we think we're in full compliance with all of the applicable criteria.
Board members, any final questions?
No. Kathy's speaking now.
Sue's speaking now.
No from Ben.
No questions at this time from Eric.
Okay. Mr. Assistant Planner, are there any other members of butters or interested parties that would like to weigh in? Okay. At this time, I'd like to propose some conditions for the petition. And before I do that, I just want to review. Mr. Landry, you mentioned that for the lanterns petition, you're proposing 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Is that correct?
That's correct. It's likely to start later than that, in the October to mid-November timeframe, where we don't have darkness until a little bit later. So it'll probably be from 5:00 or 6:00 to 9:00 for the first several weeks, and then 4:00 to 9:00 thereafter.
Okay. And for the timeframe for the lanterns, you're proposing October through January?
Yes, the second week of October through to Martin Luther King Day in January.
Okay. And for the special events and weddings, you're proposing 16 events?
16 events to occur between Mother's Day, first Sunday of May, and October, call it October 12th, Columbus Day.
Okay. And you're proposing that those events would take place from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.?
Correct, but noting that the likely time for the weddings would be more like 5:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Okay. And you're going to limit capacity to those special events to 150 people. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. That said, I'd like to propose some conditions to this petition regarding the lantern special use permit petition. I would like to propose that it be limited to October through January, and the hours of operation be from 4:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Regarding weddings and special events, I would propose that they be limited to 16 events, place from May through October, and the hours of operation would be 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It would be limited to 150 people. I would also propose that this petition be contingent on parking approvals from St. Phil's and the Abbey. And should they, at any point in time, decide not to offer that parking, that this petition will no longer be valid. Board members, have any other conditions you'd like to propose?
No. Kathy's speaking now.
Sue's speaking now.
Ben's speaking, no.
Eric's speaking, no.
Okay. At this point, I think we're ready to vote.
Mr. Chair, do I? Mr. Chair, do I, would, if, if I may, could I ask if the board would consider, as I believe is in place at the Greenville Vineyards, that this not be a, a special permit that expires each year, but that it is perhaps reviewed each year so that we don't have to do the same exercise and we can provide a report on the, the dates for the upcoming year of special events and so forth and, and have an annual review where things like traffic and other, other issues can be, can be reviewed and assessed by the, by the board.
Mr. Landry, I, I recognize your question and I have to defer to the solicitor. Mr. Gavin? Is Mr. Gavin with us?
Yeah. Go on mute.
Okay. Sorry, I was just kind of getting off the track there. I, I don't recall that there's any annual reporting or, or anything from Greenville. I think that, I think it's just, they just proceed every year in accordance with the terms of the approval and the conditions. I, I'm not aware of any, I, I may have forgotten, but I'm not aware of any, any of these special, special use permits for, for weddings on, on farms that, or special events that require annual, an annual return to the board of review to, to re, you know, reinstate the approval. Mike, Michael, correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm, if I'm forgetting something, but I, I think the, the way we've done these things is the approval is in place and, and that's it.
Okay, I'm like Controlless and Town Planner. That's correct. The, the only way there would be an issue is if there were conditions not met or there are violations that were cited by the zoning enforcement officer that, that could possibly obstruct the, the approval.
So, Mr. Landry, it appears as though that you don't, you don't need to meet the purely criteria in for review.
That, well, thank you for that. That's really all I was hoping to, to clarify.
Okay, that said, are we ready to vote? Mr. Farrell?
This is Ben Farrell. Mr. Chairman, I vote to approve both the special use permit for the lantern program and the special use permit for the special events. The Green, Green Animals Topiary Garden appears to be made for this kind of events, for these kinds of events. I'm confident that the Preservation Society of Newport County will be a good neighbor and operate these events with that goal in mind. Both special use permits involve uses that are compatible with the goals of our comprehensive plan and both uses also satisfy the special, the special use criteria. Thank you.
Yes, Sue? Sue, are you muted? We can't hear you. Does Sue need to be?
Okay, she should be.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject?
Yes, please.
I may have missed it, but I don't think the board voted on the conditions.
Yes, that's a really good point, Mr. Solicitor. You're earning your money. That's good to see. Board members, is there a second for the conditions?
Kathy's speaking. Aye, yes.
Okay, board members individually, all those in favor of the conditions?
Aye. Kathy?
Sue, aye.
Eric, aye.
Ben, aye.
Okay. I approve as well and the motion's been approved unanimously for the conditions in place. Thank you, Mr. Solicitor.
Do I need to recast my vote now that we have conditions?
No, I, I think, other than just adding subject to conditions, you approve.
I approve.
Yes. Okay, Sue?
I approve for reasons previously stated for both special use permits.
Thank you. Eric?
I also approve both for reasons previously stated by Mr. Farrell.
Kathy?
I approve both the special use permits for the reasons previously stated. I concur with Ben Farrell.
I, I have to say that this was a very well-presented petition. The Preservation Society has a long and proven track record and I welcome them to expand their use in Green Animals in Portsmouth. And I think this is going to be a really exciting venture for both Preservation Society and the town of Portsmouth. And I feel confident that they've met all the special use criteria. We have expert traffic testimony on the record and we have a series of participants that have a long history of organizing large-scale events. And I'm comfortable that with the conditions in place, that this is going to be an exciting and hopefully fruitful adventure for both the Preservation Society and the town of Portsmouth. So, I vote to approve. Thank you for your petition. You've been approved.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and members of the board.
Okay, for the record, the chairman now is actually in the board. And first of all, I want to thank Mr. Borden for being the first to chair a virtual meeting. And to the members of the board, I, I sat in the background and kind of observed and I thought it went very well. Now, I know Mr. Farrell is going to jump off, so that will leave myself, Ms. Pavlakis, Mr. Reposa, Ms. Horowitz, Mr. Borden, and I think Mr. Wadik is going to come back on. Is he there, Mike?
Yeah, I just put him as an attendee.
All right, he's.
Mr. Chair, yeah, just take a five minute.
Yeah, we're going to take like a five minute break. So, any members that need to get up and maybe use the restroom ahead, so let's try to be prompt back here.
Okay, this is Ben. Thank you very much and you folks have a good evening.
Okay. You also.
Okay, we'll take five.
Can you mute him, Mike?
Yeah.
Well. Hey, Pumpkin. Hey, Monkey. Hey, Monkey Face. How you doing? Who's the bad girl? She ran away today.
Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, the zoning board review is back in session. We can see Mr. Reposa's back on. Screen's red. Ms. Pavlakis is back on. Ms. Horowitz is there. Mr. Wadik is there. Myself and Mr. Borden here. Mr. Gavin's here.
What's happening?
All right. Well, we'll start the, there's Mr. Reposa. All righty, you want to take everybody off mute, Mike?
Yeah, actually, I leave mine until they stop.
Yeah.
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is a petition by Marion and Brian Phillips for 66 Kelton Street. Are they on?
Yes, they are.
They are? Okay.
Is that them, the Pixel, right?
Yes.
There you go.
All right, let me.
All right, hang on. Mike is just promoting you somehow, some way. Ah, there you are. Oh, we added that. There we go.
You're back.
Yes, thank you for being patient with us.
You're back.
We just listened to the whole two hours of that written discussion.
So, Marion and Brian Phillips, before the board, seeking a 5% lot coverage variance and a seven-foot side yard variance for the purpose of constructing a deck on their property, which is located on Tax Assessor's Map 77 Lot 75A out on Prudence Island. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and just explain to the board how you got to the point where you need this variance?
Okay, well, when we, when we were required to put in a new septic system a few years back, we had to move to the other side of the house so that when we were rich enough and retired, it would facilitate the addition of a deck facing the bay. Well, we never got rich. We did get retired and we'd like to proceed with this dream. Well, other houses on our plot have porches facing the water. We do not. And we'd like to add a deck to enjoy the view and make it easier to sit outside and avoid the ticks. It would be especially beneficial to my wife, who has just had a second heat replacement, as it would be a more secure sitting area with easier access. Due to the fact that our house basically faces in the wrong direction, south of our undersized lot, we would like to add an east and facing deck. We would have preferred a deck with a 12-foot depth. We feel that 10 feet would be adequate and make it so that most of the deck would be within the guidelines. Only a nine-foot section of the deck would not meet the setback requirements as per, as we see if you have those. As for the special use part of it, space fire protection, there is no change to the, to the accessibility to our dwelling or any of the neighbors for that, for fire protection. The deck does not affect the airflow or lighting of any neighbors. The proposed deck will not affect the neighborhood. In fact, it will be more in line with the elements. And the proposed deck will not impose any detriment to the public or adjacent properties. The two houses directly in front of us and most, and most affected by the town have both given us notarized affidavits of their support and approval. And that's where we are.
Thank you. You made my job a lot easier because I didn't have to go through the special use criteria.
I had two hours to prepare.
All right, with that, and I've had time to read through this, I, I'm going to ask for any questions from board members. I'll start one at a time and start with Mr. Borden. Mr. Borden, do you have any questions for the Phillips?
I have, I have no questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. Ms. Pavlakis, do you have any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, Mr. Reposa?
I, I don't have any questions at this time. Thanks.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Well, we do have two, I have two letters that were copied onto the petition. One was from Christine Dykes, who owns real estate, which abuts the property and that's have no objection. That letter is in the file. And another one from Tim Howard and Kathleen Whitcomb, who are also apparently are abutters, who also are very supportive of this. So, do we have any outside abutters raising hands, Mike? We do not. So, with that, again, we have the Phillips before us for Tax Assessor's Map 77 Lot 75A. They are seeking a special use permit for a substandard lot of record and also a seven-foot side yard dimensional variance and a 5% variance on lot coverage. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner walked through all the special use criterion for a substandard lot of record and I feel as though he's met the approval. The lot is 5,663 square feet in an R20 zone. The petitioner is encumbered by a very small lot and the deck is a reasonable request. And the seven-foot side yard variance, in my opinion, is a reasonable request. Also, given the size of the lot, 5,600 square feet in an R20 5,600 square feet in an R20 zone, 25% lot coverage is reasonable. And a 5% variance for lot coverage, in my opinion, is reasonable. I think to deny for the use of a deck, which is a permitted use, would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. So I vote to approve.
Special use permit.
And in regards to the special use permit, they met all the criterion. And I vote to approve the special use permit for substandard lot of record as well.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis.
I agree with Mr. Borden, and I vote to approve both the applications, both special use permits. I mean, the variances. I'm sorry.
And the special use permit.
Yes, and their special use permit.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa.
I also vote to approve both for reasons previously stated by Mrs. Pavlakis.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz.
I vote to approve for reasons previously stated for both applications.
Thank you. The chairman votes to approve for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden as well. Again, the applicant gave testimony that they meet all the criteria of special use permit. And I think, you know, it's a small variance request. I'm sorry you didn't get rich, but I'm happy you retired.
There's still time. There's still time.
Still time, exactly. So your petition has been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Stay safe. Enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you very much.
I had such a kick trying to put that. When I read this, I started laughing when I read this. I didn't get rich, but I did retire.
All right. The next item on the agenda is petition by Brian Worcester of 64 Wayne Lincoln, Rhode Island, Tax Assessor's Map 75 Lot 17. Is Mr. Worcester on?
Yes, I am, sir.
All right, I can see you well there. Thank you very much. So you're taking a dimensional variance of 12-foot front and nine-foot side and a 12% lot coverage variance and the special use criteria for Prudence Island. Is this to add a deck to a home or a brand-new house?
No, this is to add a deck, sir.
Add a deck, okay. It wasn't quite spelled out there. So go ahead, Mr. Worcester. Please let Borden know what you'd like to do.
Sure. Similar to the Phillips, we are not rich, but hope to be so one day and hopefully retire one day as well. But my wife and I, Tori, are petitioning for adding a deck and a ramp to our house. Obviously, you can see from the lot, we actually have probably one of the smaller lots on Prudence Island. My wife does own the property just to the north of us, where you see the septic system and the leaching field. Her sister and her own that property, which was once owned by her parents. So hopefully she doesn't have any objections. She's sitting beside me, so I'll know in about a second if she has any objections as an abutter that piece of property. There's two purposes for the deck. One, to enjoy the outside. The deck will be east-facing, so it'll be facing the water. But also, as you can see, on the north side of the house, there's a proposed four-foot by about a 22-foot ramp. Our daughter is, has cerebral palsy and is currently confined to either a walker or a wheelchair. And that is the only access she has to get into the house. The primary door is at that north-facing side of the house. The only other entrance is in that back south corner on the, on the jut out there. So the primary reason for that would be to allow her to have access into the house. So for those two reasons, we're asking for a variance. As you can see, we're looking for a lot coverage. I believe with that proposed deck, we would bring us to a 32% coverage of the lot. And then we would also need setbacks on both the front and sides, that being the east and north sides of the lot.
Okay. Mr. Worcester, if you don't mind, and allow me to do my job, so I will go through the special use criteria. So if allowed, would this still allow for adequate space and fire protection?
Yes, it would, sir.
Okay, would it still provide adequate light and air between buildings?
Yes, it would, sir.
And would it alter the character of the neighborhood or adversely affect any neighboring properties?
No, it would not, sir.
And would it create lot coverage or setbacks less than the average lot coverage of some of your adjacent properties?
That I don't know, sir. I, I, I believe we would be in terms of lot coverage, I don't think the setbacks, but I think the lot coverage, we would be a little bit over.
Okay. Would it impose a substantial detriment to the public or to immediate neighbors?
No, it would not, sir.
Good. Questions from the board at all? Mr. Borden. I do not have any questions. Thank you. Kathleen?
No, I know this property very well. I do not have any questions. I know how limited it is. So.
Mr. Reposa.
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
No questions at this time.
The chairman does not have any questions at all as well. There is one letter that came in to this. It's for the record. It's dated March 10, 2020 to zoning board review. It says, "We have no objections to zoning variance requested by Brian and Victoria Worcester, Holbrook Avenue, Prudence Island, and White Makeout existed." The name on it, but they are on 22 Holbrook Avenue, Prudence Island. So. Who is it?
Becky and Rick Cornell.
Yeah, that would be, okay, thank you. It was hard to read the handwriting. So they are in favor of it. So Mike, do we have anybody? No objectors, butters, no hand raisers? Okay. So Brian and Victoria Worcester before the board, Tax Assessor's Map 75 Lot 17 on Prudence Island. They are seeking a 12-foot side yard variance and nine-foot, I'm sorry, a 12-foot front yard variance, a nine-foot side yard variance, and a 12% lot coverage variance for the purpose of adding a proposed deck along with a proposed ramp to the deck on their house. The applicant has given testimony that they do meet the special use criteria, although Lot D, they weren't quite sure of create lot coverage and setbacks. I can tell you a lot of lot coverage on Prudence Island doesn't meet the standard. So I'm not concerned about that. So Mr. Borden.
Mr. Chairman, I would just ask, and I'm not sure if there are any butters in the queue that.
I asked.
Oh, you did ask. Okay. I apologize. I was not sure. This is all new. Yes. Okay. In my opinion, this lot is 3,750 square feet in R20 zone. Talk about a hardship. This lot is extremely small. A deck is a reasonably, a reasonable request and a permitted use in a residential area. 32% may seem excessive for lot coverage, but in my opinion, given the size of the lot, it's reasonable. So I vote to approve a 12% lot coverage variance. In regards to the setback on the east side, the front yard setback of 12 feet and the side yard setback of nine feet, I also vote to approve. I think it's a reasonable request. And to deny would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience.
Thank you. Ms. Pavlakis.
I concur with, with Mr. Borden, and I vote to approve all of the applications.
Okay. Mr. Reposa?
I also approve for reasons previously stated.
Both the special use permit and the.
For both, for both correct, yes.
Thank you very much. Ms. Horowitz?
I vote to approve both the applications for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. Chairman also votes to approve for reasons previously stated, both the special use permit and the dimensional variances. I agree with Mr. Borden. To deny this, I think amounts to more than a mere inconvenience. I don't believe the applicant would be here seeking the ramp on the side, probably just some stairs if it weren't for their particular situation. So Mr. Worcester, you're, you've been approved.
Thank you, the board. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Thank you very much.
Jim, we do have three anonymous questions by the public. The first being, are zoning board meetings automatically continued at 10 o'clock?
Yes.
Meaning, is there a time? The second question is, meaning, is there a time restriction for public or town meetings in place?
I'm not sure what they mean by that.
I think it's there's a rule that you don't go past that.
No, we can go past.
Historically.
Historically, we don't.
Yep. And third one is, did you get my question? It's important to me and surely to everyone who will not be heard this evening. Sorry if you stated the rules within the first 10 minutes of the meeting, which I could not attend.
Okay. So let me see if we've got one. There's nowhere we're gonna finish. So. So the question is, all right, so before we jump onto Mr. Pacelli's, because we've lost two months' worth of zoning meetings during the pandemic, I'd ask you, applicant, each board member individually, if they would entertain a special meeting either next week or the week after, if possible. I don't know who's available, so I'll start with Kathleen. Would you be able to do one either next week or the week after?
Are you talking about a Zoom meeting like this?
Exactly. Same as this.
Yeah, no problem. Yep.
Eric, how about you?
Would this be for the Pacellis?
No, no, no. This would be just for anything that we don't get to tonight. We would continue to a special meeting?
Yeah, I'm available. Yeah.
Okay. How about Mr. Ladika?
Available.
Okay.
I am, I am available.
Okay, Sue?
I'm available.
Okay, Kevin, how about you? Mr. Gavin?
I just gotta unmute myself. Yes, I'm, what was the date again? I'm sorry, Jim.
Well, we were looking at either next week or the week after, either, either one.
Yeah, I believe I'm available. I'll confirm when I, when you pick a date.
Okay, Mr. Borden? Yes, I'm okay. I know I next Thursday. In my opinion, so you have one for everyone being held up.
Yeah.
Three, Barbara?
I was planning on.
All right, so do we need to make a motion on that, Mike?
At the time, when you.
Okay. What we'll, what we'll do then for the board members is, right now, it looks like we're going to shoot for next Thursday. So when we get close to 10 o'clock, what we'll do is we'll make a motion to continue whatever's left to next Thursday. Okay?
Yes.
All right, so let's move right along then and try to get within some. Next. The next item on the agenda is petition by Aaron Pacelli applicant and Aaron Pacelli Al, Tax Assessor's Map 37 Lot 17. Request to create a lot and construct a dwelling on a lot that does not front on a public way. Is Mr. Pacelli on?
David Fox is the.
Ah, there's Mr. Fox.
Odie.
The Fox, I love the bridge behind you.
As long as you can hear me, the bridge is extra.
Well, you know, Trudy always had a mansion behind her. Okay, Mr. Fox, please tell us what Mr. Pacelli would like to do.
So he's looking for relief from Article 3, Section D2 of your zoning ordinance that essentially prohibits the building of a house on a lot that does not have frontage on a public street. The street that we're talking about is Suzaway. Coincidentally, it is around the corner to the Green Acres, excuse me, the Green Animals area that we were already visiting earlier this evening. The lot that was purchased by my clients totaled about 56,000 square feet. It has a house that fronts on Westwood Drive. And the petition that was filed before the planning board approved a subdivision of that lot. The lot that we're talking about now, there's a plan that I, I trust is part of your package. It is Lot 17A on Plat 37. That's the one that abuts on Suzaway. It is just under 33,000 square feet. There are eight different lots that front on Suzaway. This is the largest lot, the newly created Lot 17A. It's the largest lot on Suzaway. The typical lot on Suzaway is more consistent with a 20,000-square-foot zone district, which is what this is. In fact, you've got a couple of them on Suzaway that are less than, than 20,000. So they're asking for permission to build a single-family home on that newly created lot. It is one of the, the entire lot that was subdivided, was one of the original lots that were subdivided back when this subdivision was created. And it conforms in every other way. The Lot 17A conforms to every other way to your dimensional requirements. Again, the only way it doesn't conform is frontage on a public way. The, I believe that the planning board has issued an advisory opinion recommending approval of lot. The fire department has issued a letter advising the town of the adequacy of the fire protection in the area generally and specifically for this lot. And the, the relief that's being requested is not the, a result of action of, of this applicant. He didn't do anything to make this a difficult situation or to make it necessary in order to get relief. And because his intent is to use this to build a single-family home, and that is the way this area has developed, it is consistent with not only the general characteristics of the area, but also the surrounding areas and the, consistent with the comprehensive community plan for the area. And denial on a, on a lot of this size would clearly represent something more than a mere inconvenience to this applicant. So we're requesting the zoning board to approve the petition.
I guess a question, Mr. Fox, is how would they access this lot from Suzaway or from, because the address is 47 Westwood Drive? But as I look at the plot map, I don't see how they would access that lot from Westwood Drive.
Okay, so I'm, I'm not sure what you're, you're looking at. Lot 17 was the old lot. You have now Lot 17 that fronts on Westwood Drive, and there is a house there, and the house is located near the road.
That is correct.
On Westwood Drive. The back half of the lot, I say half, it's, it's well more than half of it, fronts on Suz's Way, and that would be their access.
Okay, so.
It's at the end by the cul-de-sac.
This is why I'm asking, Mr. Fox, because the application in front of me says the subject premise address is 47 Westwood Drive. Then it says it's Tax Assessor's Map 37 Lot 17. Does not say it's Lot 17A, and it still has the 47 Westwood Drive. So that's why I was a little confused when I'm looking at the plot map going, wait a minute, there's an existing house on Lot 17. But now I'm being told it's Lot 17A, and it's not on Westwood Drive.
As I indicated, that was the plan that was put before the planning board that was approved about a month and a half ago.
Now, well, I'm, I'm talking about.
It's the only address that it had at the time.
I'm actually talking about the application before the board.
Lot 17A doesn't exist. It's, it's all part of.
It's still part of 17.
Maybe they received the, got it, asked the planner.
Okay. It's been clarified. Thank you, Fox.
Thank you.
So how would they, their access would be what off of Suzaway then?
That's correct.
That's correct?
Yes, that's true.
Okay. All right. I don't think I have any other questions. Mr. Borden, no questions. Okay? Kathleen, any? Kathleen, any questions?
No, I do not.
Okay, um, Ms. Horowitz, any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Uh, Mr. Reposa? He's muted.
Mr. Reposa? Now there, I've got.
Mr. Reposa? Is he frozen?
Do we need to unmute him?
Yeah.
He looks like he's froze.
Yeah.
All right, but there you go. There you are. There you are, Eric.
Tough, tough wifi over here.
Yeah. All right, do you have any questions?
Uh, I kinda missed a little bit, but, uh, I, I don't believe so at the moment.
Okay, um, we have a couple of things, um, for the record here. Uh, we have an advisory opinion from the planning board, uh, which I'll read. It's, um, town enforcement planning board advisory opinion, uh, legal approval request, request for preliminary and finally, final plan approval for a minor subdivision, subdivide lot 17. Lot, one which contains existing residents on Westwood Drive, and the other front on a private road, Suzaway, which requires variance from zoning board review. Planning board received comments concerning the request at a legally noted public meeting held on January 8th, 2020. Planning board members were Givisonat, Lucardine, Edward Globes, David Darso, Ryan Tibbetts, and Kathleen Wilson. The applicant appeared with a request for preliminary plan approval for minor, for a minor two-lot subdivision at 47 Westwood Drive. The existing lot 17, which is approximately 56,544 square feet, sits between Westwood Drive and Suzalane, a private road. Proposed plan divides the lot horizontally into lot 17, which includes the existing residence and lot 17A, which fronts on Suzalane. The applicant requested an advisory opinion to the zoning board review for variance or frontage on a private road. He noted that the proposed plan does not require any variances for dimension or area. Mr. Givisonat called for public comment, which there was none. A motion was made and seconded to make a favorable recommendation to the zoning board review for variance or frontage on a public road. All in favor and so voted. We also have two other items in, uh, here for the record. One is from the Portsmouth Fire Department. Says, "To make concern, Mr. Aaron Pacelli came into my office today requesting a letter from me stating Portsmouth Fire Department's position on its property located 47 Westwood Drive as a relation to the property being subdivided and sometime in the future, a house being built on the subdivided land." "It appears the closest hydrant is approximately 625 feet from the property when access from Suzaway, which is within the capable distance of a hoseway from any of our engines." "Suzaway is a private way, however. It already has four or five houses on it. I don't see any points with subdividing the lot and would support the same. Any questions? Please feel free to contact me at any time. Respectfully, Captain Mark Riemel, fire marshal." Then the last one, uh, I have here is from a butter for Martha NATO of 67 Suzaway. Says, "Members of the Portsmouth Rhode Island zoning board review, I write in reference to Aaron Pacelli's request for a variance to construct a single-family dwelling on a newly created lot, not fronting on a public way located at 47 Westwood Drive, Suzaway. Where I live was not mentioned in the butter notification, so I am correct to assume that Pacelli's driveway would be located on Westwood Drive? If their intention is to locate the driveway for the new lot off of Suzaway, then I have a major concern with its location. It should not be put directly across from my driveway as the land on their side of Suzaway is considerably higher than our side of the road. Water, rain, snowmelt, etc. would run down their driveway and onto my driveway and front lawn, and inevitably end up in the lower level of my raised ranch. And swiftly down our road, when it rains, an additional water coming from a high elevation driveway would be a disaster to us. If they are putting in a driveway on Suzaway, it has to be staggered between existing driveways. To do otherwise would be detrimental to my property. Additionally, there is concern of road vault and blockage. Suzaway is quite narrow. At no point should any portion of Suzaway be blocked. It is a safety concern and a general courtesy. Emergency vehicles, wall types need to be able to access every house on Suzaway unhindered, and all residents on Suzaway need to be able to come and go from there freely and without delay. Therefore, any construction vehicles involved with Pacelli's lot need to park off-street. I would appreciate, now, I would appreciate that these concerns be addressed at the meeting on 5/21/2020." So with that being said, Mr. Fox, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Would there be any opposition to a condition, uh, placed on this petition if approved that the driveway for this lot would have to be staggered and not in alignment with any other driveway on Suzaway?
That Mr. Nader's is only, uh, property that it could line up with, and we have no objection whatsoever to putting it in some other position than directly across from that.
Okay, thank you for that. Mr. Shul, do we have anyone with a hand raised or any questions? Do we have any questions from any of the other board members? No? Okay, before we vote, uh, before we vote, um, I would like to propose a condition that if approved, the driveway leading to the proposed lot 17A, uh, off of Suzaway have to be staggered and not in alignment with any other driveway on Suzaway. May I have a second? Second, Mr. Borden has a second to that. Uh, we will need to take a vote in favor or not in favor. Ms. Publakis?
I am in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
I support it.
Thank you, Mr. Reposa.
I support it.
Thank you, and of course, the chairman supports it as well. Okay, that being said, uh, Mr. Aaron Pacelli is before the board. It means to create a lot and construct a dwelling on a lot that does not front on a public way, tax assessors map 37, what would become lot 17A. Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, um, the petitioner is requesting subdivision. In our 20 zone, the proposed lot is 33,000 square feet, well in excess of the minimum requirement. Just because it's on a private way, the owner should not be deprived of the right to subdivide and fully utilize his property. The petition has already been approved, um, by the planning board in terms of a favorable, favorable recommendation to us, and to deny would amount to a hardship more than a mere inconvenience. I vote to approve.
Thank you.
Such to the condition.
Thank you. Ms. Publakis?
I concur with Mr. Borden, and I approve.
Thank you. Mr. Reposa?
I also concur with Mr. Borden and approve.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
Vote to approve for reasons previously stated.
Thank you. The chairman votes to approve for reasons previously stated. I do think to deny amounts more than a mere inconvenience. The lot, uh, meets all other dimensional standards. There are other houses already on Suzaway. So, uh, again, my vote is to approve. So it has been approved, Mr. Fox.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and board members. Appreciate your time.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, next item on the agenda is a petition by Howard Marsh of 275 Farmland Drive, Portsmouth Tax Assessors Map 65 lot 3A, seeking a variance from the fence, metro variance for the fence. Mr. Schpel?
Hello, am I unmuted?
You are unmuted, Mr. Schpel. Before we go on, I just want to thank you again for your time last week because that time to practice was invaluable.
I, I think you're all doing very well.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Schpel, I would also like to thank you for your time. Very well done.
Quite welcome. So I hope you're gonna find this easy, although a tad complicated from what we've done in the past. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Knott said, we're here on, uh, map 65 lot 3A. It's the Marsh property. And for those of you that have either gone down and seen it or looked at it, it's a magnificent 11-acre piece on Sakonet River in that private neighborhood, uh, you all know as farmlands. A little bit of history, all he's trying to do, there's two main buildings on the property. There's the main house, and there's a conservatory. What he's trying to do is to put in a lap pool. It's 80 feet long, 10 feet wide. It's designed for exercise. And in looking at it and designing it with the architects and the builder that I have here today, there was an issue of, based on the grounds and the architectural integrity of the building, on whether a fence could, uh, be erected around it or whether a more modern approach could be taken. With that, I have to give you a brief history lesson. In 1977, Rhode Island Building Code was passed. Originally, the Rhode Island Building Code, much like our zoning ordinance, required fences around pools for obvious safety reasons. In 2015, the National Building Code was amended. And it was amended in what we call Section 30, um, 305, which is in your handouts. But Section 305 stated that if you get the high-tech new covers, and not our father's covers that we put on in September and take off in June, this is an electric cover where you turn a key and a hardcover covers your pool completely. So unlike a fence that you can leave a gate open, or unlike a fence that you can climb over, this seals your pool from anyone getting in or out of that pool. So what Section 305 15, I'm sorry, 305.1 said was if the cover passes a standard that they passed, that's called AFTM F1346, that standard is also enclosed. But again, what it really means is a 485-pound weight can be put on it without falling through it, and it can electrically be shut and opened, uh, to secure the pool from safe, as, as a safety feature. With that, the state building code no longer requires a fence. In places like Massachusetts, it's kind of come to light on whether or not a zoning ordinance could still require a fence or didn't require a fence, and maybe that is a conversation for another day, but I did bring that, uh, to the attention of both the building inspector and your solicitor, who I think are, are looking at it. But what we did is we said, "On this particular piece of property, maybe we don't have to solve that today." Because on this particular piece of property, when you add that cover with the topography and size of this land, I'm hoping to satisfy you that in this case, a fence of four or six feet immediately around the pool is not necessary. And I have just one witness with me tonight, uh, who's Tom Perkins from Kirby Perkins, who's building the pool. But because of time, I think I'd just like to run first through the exhibits, and then I can swear him in, and we can ask him any questions. So my argument again is that we may not have to ask at all, given the zone change, but as a dimensional variance, I think I can show that all of the purposes of generally having a fence, when you couple it with this hardcover and the topography of this lot, uh, I, I can satisfy. So I'm gonna go to the first picture. Uh, you should all have a set of pictures, and I know, uh, the clerk is ready to put them up, but if you go to the first picture, which I believe is about page 16 of your exhibits, I don't know if you have them, okay? That's an aerial view taken from Google Earth, which shows my client's house. So if you look to the right-hand side of the screen, 65 3A, that's the Marsh residence. If you see the large house, you will also see a building that, uh, the lines are drawn from. That's a building we call the conservatory, generally a greenhouse, open structure with, uh, with walls and a roof. What you can't see just off to the right of the picture in the direction of east is the Sakonet River. This is right on that. What we've done, and what Mr. Cur, uh, what Mr. Perkins has done, is he sent staff to draw this to show just how far it is from a neighbor's house. Remember, your ordinance in town that allows pools as a matter of right that says that there's a fence, your fence can be on the outside of the perimeter of your property. So that fence may be capable of stopping neighbors. I venture to say that any child that goes the distance from a house to the back of this yard, there should be an amber alert out. The closest child is over 600 feet away. If you look to the northeast, in every other direction, it exceeds 1,000 feet. And it's not 1,000 feet of neighborhood, uh, where it's dense and there's a number of children. This is the farmlands gated community. And what you can't see in this picture is the top of farmlands at Whopping Road, where there is a coded gate that you need a password to get in or a key code. You can also, what you can't see, but you'll see in, in the pictures, is that at the tree line, uh, at my prop, at my client's property, uh, there's another coded keyed gate there. And I'd ask the clerk to move to the second photo. So this is a picture of the gate that's closest to the Marsh property. Excuse me. Again, it's already at the end of the farmlands road, and there's a coded gate up as well. So any kid or neighbor that's gonna get into this area where this pool is gonna be has to trespass through two coded gates. And this is the area. Now we are driving down the farmlands road, looking east. If you kept going through the house, you'd get to the Sakonet. The next picture is standing in that gate, looking back north. So you look back another 400 feet over this field, which is also fenced, which is an orchard. So again, this is not an area where kids are playing. It's not a soccer area. It's not a, uh, a place where their neighbors are. So this is that distance looking north that we saw in our first map that exceeded 600 feet. The third, that's a picture of the conservatory as built, and that's the lawn and the area where the lap pool would go. I ask you to take note of that row of abrevites, certainly much higher than six feet, certainly much, uh, thicker, more difficult to scale or cross, uh, than a fence. And also, our ordinance does allow, at least in other areas, four fences to be constructed of natural vegetative material. So I, the area immediately around the pool will be blocked from the conservatory building itself, uh, to the north, and this row of abrevites, uh, to the west. The next picture is another of you, just from the other side of the road, again, showing you the distance from the gate to the back gate. Now remember, my client owns everything here. This is all part of his land. So even though it's double gated, that's a double security system for him. You have to go through a long piece of his property before you get to his other gate and property. You look at the next page, you will see, uh, two of the buildings, his main house and a garage building. What's circled there are motion detector security cameras that go off if anyone trespasses on the property and calls the local manager who has, uh, links directly to the police and fire department. So again, it's a highly secure site. The next photo is interesting. This is the Sakonet River, which is now your border to the west. Note, it's not a six-foot fence, but it's not exactly Sandy Point Beach where I walk onto your lawn. I have to scale what appears to be a 20-foot bank. Certainly, that natural boundary should provide all of the, uh, security of a fence. I also want you to know, I intentionally took these pictures. We didn't go back out this week when there's a lot of fresh vegetation. I took these pictures and left them during the winter, so this is the worst that, uh, the vegetation provides security. Certainly in the summer, the spring, and now, as all of the, uh, dryers and, uh, growth of the trees mature, the summer is gonna be more protected than it is. But even in its most barren state in the winter, you'll note that there is topography again that protects it from the Slow Island River. And I think that becomes important if you go to the next page. This is to the south. And again, 1,000 feet to the nearest, uh, residence. And again, 1,000 feet to the nearest residence. So you have to go all the way across a piece of his property. You get to this stone wall and that scrub growth, which is a, you know, olives and small prickers and things. And that wall and that growth also is gonna keep any child out, which is really all you're probably looking at. Remember again, that my fence can go around the outside of my property. The fence isn't to protect my own children and grandchildren, it's to protect neighbors' children. I protect my own children by the mandated coded doors that need to, if I have a pool, that open into the pool area, and now by turning a key and closing my pool completely with this safety cover. Next picture now looks to the north. And again, I believe it's 800 feet or more, or plus 1,000 to the north as well. Again, you can see the picture taken in the winter with the least amount of vegetation, but you can see that it's prickers and thorns, a stone wall, and a deep vegetated forest. So there is, again, no child coming in from that direction. So it's my desire to ask you tonight that even though our zoning ordinance says a fence is required around a pool, now that our state building code has said it is no longer required, if you spend the money to get this electric safety automatic closing gate, or closing top cover, that's capable of holding a human, never mind a child, but a 485-pound 485 pounds of weight, then that should be relaxed. And if we were struggling with that in a small neighborhood, we shouldn't struggle with it here because we were in farmlands, perhaps the most private area in town, other maybe than Carnegie, and because of the sheer distance of not less than 600 feet, and in most sites, over 1,000 feet with natural topography, vegetation, stone walls, cliffs, and things that for all purposes will keep people safe. I can also represent that the insurance companies, his homeowners particularly, has been asked whether they insure this cover, and the answer is yes, based on the federal building code, and now the adoption by Rhode Island. If you have this cover, you do not need a fence for all insurance purposes. I just think it's a practical solution, and I ask you to grant the same. I do have my builder here, if you have any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Mrs. Chappelle, I get it, you have to be a Navy SEAL to penetrate this property and get to the pool. However, just per chance that someone does get to the pool, what if the homeowner has a few drinks and forgets to put the cover on the pool, and someone happens to go in? A fence would stop that person.
Well, again, fair question. But remember, our ordinance again says that we can fence the outside of our property. And we're not talking about teenagers, because any teenager's gonna hop a fence if they wanna get in. What we're talking about is small children. And it does not, our requirement does not require, nor does the state building code, which is something I may write, that says you should put that fence six feet from the water. Because if you put the fence six feet from the water, an unattentive parent only has to worry about the gate. In this particular case, that's just not what happens. If there are our guests on this property, we are responsible for them, the same way in I had a pool, which was my backyard, and any kid in that backyard, I had to worry about it, and I had to do it. What I think it's supposed to protect is when I'm away, is there a kid walking across my property that accidentally goes in there? And that's just not gonna happen in this particular case. And a drunk, quite frankly, cannot be paying attention when they're sitting in the lawn chair next to this child, and a drunk can leave the gate open. In these particular cases, they can close that. I also remind you, it's a lap pool. So it's not necessarily the type of pool where I'm sitting out there with my 16 friends with cocktails and lawn chairs. It's not that type of patio environment. It is a, it's 85 feet long and 10 feet wide, like designed as an exercise facility that you cover when you use, or uncover when you use, and cover when you don't. It's not part of the amenities of you know, hey, look, I've got a pool out there that we're all gonna go play in. So I do understand that you can be, you can get, have a drunk guest or do whatever and not be paying attention, but no more or less than I think than a regular pool. And from neighbor protection, I think this is 15 times more more protective without a cover than my house was fenced, just because of the neighborhood scenario. With the cover, clearly, I think it adequately protects more than more than a routine fence that used to be required and is no longer required by the code.
Thank you, Mr. Chappelle.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a few comments?
Absolutely.
It's Sue Horwitz. It's Sue, sorry. Okay, first of all, I agree with Mr. Chappelle about the code. That is what the code says now. It's the new thing. I don't, and I understand it's written in our zoning code, but I don't believe it's our responsibility to decide on a building code issue. You know, I understand what Mr. Chappelle is saying, but there's no guaranteeing it's gonna be a lap pool. It may become a huge Olympic-sized pool. That's not something they would have to come before the board about, the size of the pool. So, and to have security cameras, well, some kid will be dead long before, and drowned before the security cameras anyone gets there. So this is a building code issue, and I think we should, if there's a way to sideswipe what's said in the zoning code, we should take that approach. That's my opinion.
I did attach, so I did attach as the second attachment, not in the original package, but separate. That's actually a letter from the attorney for the state building code, who also had us, gave us a number of Mr. Catalano or Mr. Gareth Eng to call. They take the position that 23273100 of the building code says no town can enact any codes that are different from what we passed. I get that there was
And we're not
We can wrestle with that, but it does comply with the code.
And we're not talking about enacting a code here. We're talking about a variance. And I think there's some common sense for the board members to remember. Now, remember, as Mr. Chappelle pointed out, that the property, if we're invited by the ordinance, you don't necessarily have to put it around the pool. You can put it around the entire property, okay, which still is not necessarily gonna protect anybody that's on the property at that point in time. You know, I think Mr. Chappelle points out, with the motion-activated security cameras, at least you know if someone's coming on the property. So I'm actually familiar with the, with these covers. I've seen these covers at a couple locations, and I was fairly impressed with them. And again, Sue, to your point, well, what happens if this turns into an Olympic pool? Well, if people make their decisions correctly, then you specify it for a certain size pool, which means that's what it may or may not be granted, whatever your preference is. And in that particular case, if they change from that, they would be back before this board. I also, my biggest thing with gates and fences, and I don't know how many times I've driven around town here, and seen the swimming pools that people get by with the ladders that lock up, and you drive by, and the ladder's down, nobody locks them up, you know, same with fences, gates are open, things of that nature. So you know, I guess there's some common sense there. I'm just throwing that out there, so.
I'm just saying, I didn't think, am I on, or am I muted?
We can hear you.
Yeah, I don't think we should be making this judgment if it's a building, if it's a building code issue. I don't believe
It's a variance request. It's a request to, it's a request from Article 5, Section I.
Yeah, I understand that. Then what our request should be to, to, I don't know the proper wording for it, but that we're bowing down to the building code. So we will, that should be what we're saying in the variance, that we
Actually, no, Sue, we're not bowing down from the building code. We're about, we're, we're looking at a variance from the ordinance. Okay, the applicant has brought up the building code as part of their testimony, but all we're dealing with is the zoning ordinance, so.
What happens, what happens if we approve this, and I'm just being a devil's advocate here, and someone falls in the pool and drowns, and they said, well, and they come back to the zoning board and says, but you allowed it. That's where, why I feel that it shouldn't be our responsibility, where it becomes something of a safety issue.
Well, if you think about many of the judgments we make, Sue, you could probably take that argument to any of them. You know, allowing a house not in a public way, like we just did a little while ago, and what happens if they build the house and they flood the property next door, and those people come back to the board, well, you allowed it, so. But again,
No, but it's not the building code. That's the difference between the two examples. That's my opinion.
I don't base my judgment on a building code. I base it on the ordinance and the testimony before me. So, but each member has their right to vote their way, so.
Can I interject just one thing?
Absolutely.
I don't disagree at all with Sue, and I think that's the way it should be done. And I think that may be what happens when someone else appeals it, if it's not granted. We tried to suggest to the building inspector that this was superseding it, and they just haven't made a decision yet. I don't think they've made a decision that it is. I don't think they've made a decision that it isn't. The problem is, it's May 18th, and if you're gonna build a pool, now remember, this is also, we applied a month and a half ago with everything that's happened, but we were trying to get it done this year. And sometimes it may take a little more time to figure out whether or not legally it supersedes it. But I kind of agree with you that it does.
Mr. Chappelle, I don't want to debate the building code thing anymore. That's not what we're here to do, so thank you. But I'm gonna reach out to any other members to see if any other members have any questions regarding this, Mr. Repose.
No questions this time.
Ms. Poblakis?
No questions.
Okay, I have no other questions. Is there anything else you wanna add, Mr. Chappelle?
No, thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody, Mike, any members from the public? No, okay. That being said, we'll vote on this, so. Howard Marsh owners before the board protects this map 65 lot 3A, seeking a dimensional variance under Article 5, Section I-5, which according to the ordinance requires that any swimming pool be enclosed by a six-foot fence and the pool area locked when not in use. So, Mr. Borden?
Mr. Chairman, this is a very unique petition. And if this petition were in Lawrence Farms, or Sandy Point, or Birchwood Village, I would deny it. Because it's in farmlands, because of the distances between budding properties, because of security systems, because of the brush and barriers that are in place to get to this lap pool, given the fact that they are proposing a cover, we have to trust the homeowner that he's going to lock it. And it would be extremely rare, should someone happen to get through all these barriers and get in this pool. It's also a lap pool. If it were in, I don't know, a normal swimming pool, where you entertain and would be attractive for children to go find it, even if they could get past all the security that's in place, it might be more of an attractive nuisance. But in this case, I feel as though that the proposed lap pool, given the proposed safety requirements that are in place with the cover, I think it would amount to more than a mere inconvenience to deny the petition. I do also wanna say that I think in respect to Sue, she raised some very good points in regards to the to the building code. And to the chairman's point, this is a zoning variance, dimensional relief for the fence requirement, and in this isolated incident, in this isolated case, not to set a precedent, I vote to approve. I think it would amount to more than a very convenience deny this petitioner the right to have a lap pool without a fence.
I do. Ms. Poblakis?
I can agree with Mr. Borden, and I just also like to add that I think whether it's a six-foot fence or this pool cover in question here, I think that it all comes down to supervision, responsibility, and vigilance. It doesn't matter which it is. So I vote to approve.
Thank you. Mr. Repose?
I also vote to approve for a recent statement by Mr. Borden.
Thank you. Ms. Horowitz?
May I abstain from voting?
No, you have to vote.
You can vote to deny.
You can vote to deny.
I'm not voting to deny, because I don't think it's our position to vote, so that's why I would like to abstain and not vote on it.
No, you have to, you have to vote, Sue, sorry.
And I'll vote to support it, but in opposition, with protest.
Okay. The chairman will also vote for reasons previously stated by Mr. Borden, but I will say that Sue does bring up some very valid points, Sue, you do. And this is just one particular case, again, where the ordinance is far outdated from technology and building codes, et cetera, similar to many other things, and that's why they're redoing it. So Mr. Chappelle has been approved. I think it is a unique situation.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're past the witching hour. We have one old petition left and three new ones that were going to be heard tonight. Petition of Bullfrog LLC, the petition of Andrew Gonzalez, the petition of Tim and Christine Downs, and the petition of Rhode Island Design Bill. I'd like a motion to continue those to a special meeting to be held, again, virtually similar to this one, next Thursday, May 28th, at 7:00 PM.
So, Mr. Chairman.
Motion made by Mr. Borden, may I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Poblakis. Ms. Poblakis, are you in favor of?
Yes.
Borden, I'm, Mr. Borden is?
Yes.
Mr. Repose?
Yes, I agree.
Ms. Horowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Wadika?
Yes.
Chairman also votes in favor, so we will continue those petitions to next Thursday night, special meeting virtually on the 28th. Also, I would ask Mr. Shola to reach out to those particular petitioners, just and remind them of it in case somebody dropped off tonight, okay?
I think three of us are here.
Yeah, okay, all right. Well, we're gonna hold a special one next week and
And thank you for that, but I
Thank you, Mr. Chappelle, for your support last week.
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. Motion made by Mr. Borden, could I have a second?
A second, yeah.
Second by Mr. Repose, all in favor individually, and Ms. Poblakis?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Repose?
Yes.
Ms. Horowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Wadika?
Yes.
And the chairman as well. Have a good night, folks. Thank you again for your
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
Not sure I even know how to get out.
Well, that was interesting. That was fun.